2025, this meeting is called to order. And I don't think that Reverend Wakefield is here, so we will have a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Megan, could we please have a roll call?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? The agenda is approved. It is now time for community update from our county commissioner, Gail Patterson Gladby.
Hello.
Hi.
I bring you some news from our county during our last Board of Commissioners meeting, February 11th. We received an update, actually it was for the committee of the whole, which comes before the BOC. But the board received an update on broadband from Chris Shire. He's with DCS Technology. And the county had hired him to help make sure that all of the homes in Van Buren County would be able to connect to high-speed internet. And we are using ARPA dollars for that. Currently, there are two areas where work still needs to be completed. Lawrence Township and Geneva Township. Geneva Township is on schedule to be completed by 2026. There's been a request for the Board of Commissioners to approve the use of various county properties during the 2025 Wine and Harvest Festival. That takes place September 5th through September 7th. And then the Lake Shore Harvest Ride, and that's September 13th. And they want to use the South Haven Courthouse parking lot. These requests will be sent February 25th to the Board of Commissioners meeting for final approval. During the Committee of the Whole, we call that COW. The Commissioners voted to approve an emergency floor replacement at the animal control facility. And that was in the amount of $36,080. And that money will be taken from our capital improvement fund. And the reason they have to do the project is because the state inspectors required that the kennel floors had to be redone. I have talked to some residents in our area. They are concerned about our animal control department. And I'm hoping when we do our future planning that that will be an item that we really look into. And if you have some ideas or you want to see something done with our animal control department that is not being done, please let me know. Van Buren County was approved to be an AmeriCorps host site. And I have a flyer. I'm not sure if you have seen this. It's, they're going to be hiring someone through AmeriCorps to help out with our county. Due to the Veteran Service Officer in Paw Paw leaving and going to another position, we are now looking for another VSO, Veteran Service Officer. We're hoping that this person will meet the qualifications before they come to us. Sometimes someone comes, they get trained, and then they leave. So we're hoping that we can find someone who is already meets the qualifications. The next two Veterans Socia's, which I mentioned in the past, will take place February 27th and March 27th. Six to eight in Paw Paw at the department headquarters. And these are great times for veterans to get together to socialize. Okay, also, the Veteran Service Department is going to have free classes. They want to help the veterans be able to use MyHealthyVet. It's a website. And I know my husband's still trying to use it, but he won't take the classes. But anyway, I think that it's really great because some websites are very difficult to maneuver. Okay, I heard about potential veterans housing in Bangor. I know Kurt Dorrell, who's the Commissioner for that area, has been looking into it. And I'm interested in finding out more about it, and I'll let you know when I do. Property taxes are due February 28th, and by March 1st, they are delinquent. Anyone who has problems with paying their taxes, please call Tricia Nesbit, our Treasurer. And sometimes they will work out a payment plan for you, so you won't be delinquent. Our Van Buren County Community Service Director, Lisa Ransler, is the person who you would see or talk to about homes or development. If you want to look into apartments in your area, if you want to find out about grants. She also has a grant for qualified residents who want home improvements. First come, first served. And if someone makes the qualifications, they could get help with their roof, et cetera. Her email address is ransler, R-A-N-S-L-E-R-L for Lisa, at vanburencounty.gov. Her telephone number, and she is really good at getting back to you, is 269-657-8200. Extension 1073. And I'll let City Councilwoman Letitia Wilkins know about the housing, that she would be a good contact if you want to know about help for housing projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Questions? For the broadband that's being funded with ARPA dollars, have those already been allocated? Or is there any chance they would be held up as like federal funds being distributed?
We don't think there will be any problems with those ARPA dollars. We were able to, if you have a certain amount of ARPA dollars left, you could put it into your general fund, and you could put it into the county coffers. So I don't think they would come and get those.
Okay.
So, okay, any other questions? Mary?
Yeah, can you say which officer is leaving from the VSO?
It's not David or Dennis.
Oh, okay, because I know they had a third person. Oh, good. So David and Dennis are senior officers. So that's, oh, phew. I was concerned one of them were leaving, and they're like the knowledge base.
Yes, yes.
Good, okay. And they're lovely people, so if you're interested, apply. They're great people. I've worked with them before. And I have nothing but wonderful things to say about Lisa. She's a go-getter, and she really does help. For the improvements, is that under the MISTDA grants? Do you know? Or, I mean, are there income limitation requirements?
Yes, I believe there are.
Okay.
But I don't know, I'm not sure if it, I can't say for sure if it's under MISTDA.
But Lisa will definitely be able to help.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you. It's now time for a public comment for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing. And you have up to five minutes.
Good evening. John Lord Stuffer, 23 Delaware. I want to comment on the short-term rental stuff that's coming up. Just three things. First, on the may versus shall, I don't have the exact wording, but I know that Councilwoman Hosley does. May doesn't really give much effect. Shall makes it mandatory. And of those provisions she mentioned, I think it's important that shall be used for that. So it is a mandatory requirement. Secondly, in regard to the lawful non-conforming uses. I know there's a lot of discussion on it, but to simplify it, let's say five years ago, you got a permit, and you're only supposed to have 12, but you've been having 14 or 16. No one's really caught it, and that's what you've been doing now for five years. New ordinance goes into effect, and the zoning ordinance says, look, you can only have 12. And they said, ah, but I've had a permit for five years. I've had 14 and 16. That's not how it works. It has to be in compliance. If you're not in compliance, it doesn't grandfather in just because you've been doing it. And finally, in regards to potential lawsuits, I think that the ordinance that you have there protects the rights of anybody that has a short-term rental. Their rights are protected, and it will carry over. So I don't know what the problem is with that. But I don't think the council should vote or not vote on something based on a threat of a lawsuit. That's not how you do it. You do it because the ordinance is good. This thing has been worked on, really, I think, about five or six years now as it's developed. And I think that you should go forward with it. But I don't think it should be based on the fact that somebody might file a lawsuit. Anybody can file a lawsuit. But the rights of the short-term rental people are protected. Thank you.
Hi, all. I'm Mike Neese, I live at 509 Fruit Street, registered voter in Ward 2. I also served two terms as a planning commissioner. As a matter of fact, I served on the commission who brought the 2018 amended ordinance to you. And I thank you for the opportunity to address this issue. I'm speaking on process, not policy here. We all share a deep commitment to the well-being of South Haven, balancing the vibrancy of our tourist economy with the cherished character and social fabric of our historic residential neighborhoods. I propose that the council and management adopt a structured, data-driven decision-making process such as the Kepner-Tregel model or Ford's AD model to guide our policy on short-term vacation rentals to reach a balance. There's a familiar saying in business, we never seem to have enough time to do it right, but we always find time to do it over. Sometimes this feels like deja vu to me. Currently, our debates tend to be binary, either fully supporting short-term rentals to boost business or imposing strict density and nuisance controls to preserve neighborhood integrity. It's not either or, folks. We end up on a seemingly endless process of band-aiding the ordinance rather than comprehensive and lasting reforms. What we need is a process that evaluates every relevant factor objectively, ensuring that both the concerns of permanent residents in the neighborhoods, Mords 1, 2, and 3, and the needs of our tourist sector are addressed thoughtfully and transparently. Transparency is especially critical since the work team selected members only from Mord 3. City residents from Mords where neighborhoods are vastly different from Mord 3 need to see how these decisions are being made to make sure that their concerns were addressed as well. By the way, that's not a statement against Mary and George. Love them both. Using a model like Kepner-Tregel, one of the first steps, and the most important step is to define and develop weighted criteria. How are you making this decision? These might include economic impact, neighborhood character, social capital, tourism revenue, housing affordability, community safety, any number of possible criteria that you, the legislative body, can insist upon. By assigning each criteria value based on, through research and community input, we create a transparent framework that clearly shows the data behind our decision. Simply said, we take a big decision and break it up into a lot of small decisions. You find that criteria that we most want, give it a 10. We rank all the other ones back to that 10. Once the criteria are established and ranked, then we evaluate each policy alternative, whether it's a business permitting system with restrictions, designated zones for vacation rentals, or any other innovative approach against these factors. The alternative that scores highest after multiplying how well it meets the criteria we establish, times how important we said that criteria was, naturally then emerges as the best balanced solution. But the work doesn't stop at choosing the best policy. The next critical step is anticipating and preventing potential problems. Using a similar numerical system, we assess what could go wrong if we institute this, and then we estimate its likelihood that it will go wrong and the severity of the consequences. We then take action, either preventive or contingent action on those things that might go wrong. Adopting a comprehensive model like KT or Ford's AD enables us to move beyond simplistic finger-in-the-damn approach. It provides a framework that is efficient, objective, and forward-thinking. This process shows that our decisions are driven by data, transparency, and a commitment to long-term planning that protects our community from future challenges. The benefits to you, the city council and our staff, includes a defined process to follow, discussion focused on smaller pieces rather than the whole, and much better team dynamics. Thank you for considering the structured fact-based method for making one of the most critical decisions facing our city. It's difficult to make a compelling argument for a process in just a few minutes. I'd be happy to demonstrate this process to staff and the work group anytime. I don't mean to sound self-serving here, but I'm going to for a moment. I've been doing this work for 40 years, facilitating decision-making. As a matter of fact, the reason I stand before you in South Haven is because I was sent here by Consumers Power to help Palisades when the NRC found a problem with the effectiveness of decision-making at the plant. We literally put every manager throughout energy supply through the decision-making model to make sure that we met, that we had a process to ensure the best possible decisions. Beyond that, from that work, then I was sent out, I was part of a small team that put together a similar model. And if you're in the auto business, I apologize for this. I was part of the team that developed the eight disciplines for problem-solving for Ford Motor Company. That's also based on objective data setting. I spent five years traveling.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. This new STR proposed ordinance does not address what planning had sent over in regard to a cap. There's no cap on there. The way it's set up right now is you're not doing what the residents wanted. They wanted to reduce the number of STRs. It doesn't happen with this. And they had 100% PRE in the one they sent over. 100% PRE got taken out. And I'm sure our attorney's going to tell us why we can't do that, but I'm just so tired of our cities being run by the attorneys. No offense, sir, but every single decision is made, are we going to get sued? Are we not going to get sued? Look at what happened to Buffalo, okay? Buffalo had 14 lawsuits because of STRs. They won 13. Lake Township, they banned completely all STRs. Guess what? They won their case, okay? But it takes bold decisions, gets things done. And this new ordinance is not doing anything. You have overlay districts. You can have as many STRs in those districts as you want. We have 800 STRs right now, and there's nothing to stop us from having 1,000. There's probably 900 for sure, probably because they haven't registered. And there's a lot of non-compliant ones. And the fact is, they have to be lawfully existing. As our previous attorney said, there's at least 50 non-compliant STRs that are registered right now. And we actually feel it's more like 100. We've sent many emails to the city. Nothing has been done to prove to us in writing why they feel that these STRs are conforming and complying with the laws before they get their STR permits. So far as I'm concerned, I miss something to send forward, but I don't think you've taken care of what planning wants. I don't think you've taken care of what the citizens want. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Shepherd, and I live at 214 Superior, a three-bedroom, 1,500-square-foot home. Next door to me, at 220 Superior, a seven-bedroom house over 4,000 square feet is being constructed by an Indiana couple. Probably a future short-term rental. The house is not suitable and never will be suitable as a single-family home. I'd like to reference your 2018 master plan. And keep in mind, as you consider your action tonight concerning the STR zoning. The purpose of the plan was to promote health, safety, and welfare. And these are direct quotes from the plan. Avoid overcrowding. Lessen congestion. Consider the character and suitability of land. And represent the views and desires of the citizens. Citizens are actually people who reside in the city of South Haven. The purpose of the plan was to retain community character. How does a seven-bedroom, 4,000-square-foot house retain the community character of Superior Street? Provide quality of life for residents. Where's the natural light that I've been enjoying in my home? Where is that going to be? There won't be any natural light with a 4,000-square-foot home next to me. The plan, the purpose of the plan was to preserve the existing character of the neighborhoods. There's no 4,000-square-foot homes in my block, seven bedrooms. Maintain existing height and lot coverage of houses. Well, at the rate this house is going, it's going to be over 35 feet. Analyze impacts for limiting size and height for new construction. I'm not sure what you're doing about that. Improve the neighborhoods where the desired character has diminished. The desired character of my neighborhood is diminishing with this 4,000-square-foot house. Provide for the safe movement of users. Well, if we now have a new seven-bedroom house, there's going to be more traffic. And there's going to be more parking on sidewalks, and there's going to be less safe movement for users. South Haven is a traditional fabric of street and parcels. And this is all quoted from your master plan. Residents desire a place to raise a family. Who can afford a seven-bedroom, 4,000-square-foot home? An attractive place for retirees. Preservation of neighborhoods and a sustainable quality of life. These are the purpose, this is the purpose of the plan. Purpose of the plan said that parking needs identified one space per unit since on-street parking is available. How is one space for seven bedrooms going to work? Don't think so. The purpose of the plan was to achieve the quality of life desired by residents. Increased traffic, need for water and sewer, public safety. What's going to happen to that? Adverse effects on adjacent properties like mine? South Haven is a retirement location. I'm retired.
You have one minute.
Half of the households are one person in South Haven. The average household size is 2.15. The average family size is 2.8. Do they need a seven-bedroom house? Superior is one of the top five streets that is the most difficult to walk. Now you're adding a seven-bedroom house to Superior. 64% of respondents who believe STRs shouldn't be allowed at all, and 60% who believe STRs should be allowed in certain districts, were year-round residents, the majority. Who should you listen to? Year-round residents or out-of-town property owners? Seven bedrooms. I ask all of you city council members to seriously consider your master plan of 2018 as you make your decisions tonight. Thank you.
Hello. My name's James Oakley. My wife and I own the home at 300 Erie Street here in town. I've spoken to you once before on a personal matter, how we've been mistreated by some of the members of NNN. Today, I'm here in more of a professional capacity. I'm the president of an organization called the South Haven Property Rights Coalition. We have 87 members who have contributed money to support the rights of property owners in town and committed to continue funding that exercise. I'm also an attorney. I'm a partner at the law firm of Taskatinius and Hollister. We have about 1,000 lawyers in the Midwest. We're one of the largest firms in the state of Michigan. I handle commercial litigation matters, business litigation matters all over the country. Handle cases in 35 states. Licensed in Wisconsin, Illinois, and right here in Michigan. I'm here to talk about the ordinance that's been proposed. I'll focus on one aspect of it, although there are many problems with it in my estimation. I'll talk about the occupancy. I understand the city council is very well aware of the concept of vested rights and how the Constitution protects those vested rights. The memo that is in front of this ordinance talks about that, but then the ordinance, contrary to those vested rights, goes on to purport to limit the occupancy and reduce it to 12. And by the city's own numbers, 97% of business short-term rentals would be impacted. And across the board, 34.1% of the occupancy would be reduced by 34.1%. That would have an immediate, significant immediate impact on the short-term rentals and would harm them in at least three ways. First, the revenue would be reduced by at least 34%, which would be millions of dollars on an annual basis. Secondly, many of the short-term rental businesses would not be viable as businesses at the reduced occupancies. And by the way, we're talking about lawful, folks that have lawful occupancies at 12 under their current ordinance going down to 10 or 8, okay? And impairing their vested rights under the current ordinance. Some of those businesses would be destroyed completely. And then third, notwithstanding the 180-day language, this ordinance would require some short-term rental owners to cancel existing reservations and destroy their ratings on Airbnb and on VRBO, potentially destroying their businesses. All told, we're talking about very significant harm, which in and of itself proves that this is a violation of their vested rights. So, you know, I'm here not because I think that I'm going to change a lot of your minds about this, but I do want to be very clear on the record that this is videotaped. And so that everybody knows, because the costs associated with this, your lawyer's going to have to defend this. He doesn't work for free, and the damages are going to run into the millions are tremendous for a city like this, and it's totally unnecessary, and it's all preventable. You've been well advised about the vested rights that exist for existing short-term rental owners. And to go forward with this ordinance, you're knowingly and intentionally trampling those rights. So the people in this town should understand, the voters, the taxpayers, they should understand precisely who's responsible for the damages and the costs that are going to flow to the city because of it. And it's going to be because, and the folks responsible will be the people that voted for this. If it's Mary, if it's Wendy, if it's Joe, if it's Letitia, if you guys vote for this, you're going to have to go to residents, look people in the eye, and explain to them why you cost them this amount of money.
Thank you.
Rich Green, 408 Eagle Street, Shore's Vacation Rentals. We are a paid member of Chivra, and I definitely kind of support what that was said, but we are not here to represent Chivra. We're here to represent our 64 homeowners. Now, in good faith, we've come here several times to work with you guys, or some of the ordinances you had on board. Excuse me. One of the ones that we seek to point out here tonight is on page 68, letter F, which talks about the license is unique, and it is not a privilege granted by the city and does not carry it over as a vested right. Out of all the stuff that is in this, this is the one we take particular problems with. These homes, whether you like it or not, have been sold with that vested right to these people who bought these homes. Now, if you want to move forward and say homes that are coming on the market, or homes like this seven-bedroom home that's being built does not have a vested right, okay? I can dig that. But these people have bought some of these places with the intent that they did have a vested right. If they needed to sell their home, their dream home, their vacation home, their second home as a short-term rental. Now, I've heard from the zoning before, and I've heard from you guys before, that, you know, you talked about keeping this as a vested right, and all of a sudden, it's kind of gone. With that in mind, I also want to kind of read from you guys, because I know you guys hate this when I bring this up, but this is your economic impact study. Want to address some of the issues that have complained about before. STRs on page 16, number four, STRs are taking housing away from the middle-class households. If you go through this, it's all the way at the very bottom, it says, "Using this benchmark, we estimate that 40% of STRs, if sold, would reach households making less than $100,000 or less." In other words, approximately 60% of existing STR parcels would be out of the reach to low and middle-income housing living in the city. Now, we've come here several times and said, "The problem is not STRs that are driving up the housing." What it is, is being zoned. When you allow a seven-bedroom house to be put in a neighborhood that doesn't have those-sized homes, we all know what happens to her tax rate. It's going to go up in comparison to that seven-bedroom home. But you guys sit here and continue to champion that this is what we're all about, saving the middle class. But then we hear stories like this. I'll put on my old man glasses again to read another one. This one is on page 25. And this is just the summary of employment and income impact study. Says, "Overall, we estimate STRs there spend between 25 to 35.5 million annually in South Haven." They also estimate that there's 305 to 432 annualized jobs between 7.6 and 10.7 million in personal income annually. Now, look, we've asked you guys several times, "Stop vilifying STRs." We get it. You guys seem to think they're the bane of existence, but the reality is, employment, they are the ones that employ here. Where's the corporations? I've been up here 15 years, and I've asked you guys before. Where are the new corporations moving in? Now, when I moved back from Michigan, from Chicago, I grew up in Kalamazoo all my life, except for when I went into the military.
You have one minute.
Michigan has recognized that this is no longer an industrial state, that this is a vacation state, and they've put millions and millions and millions in dollars to their trail, trail program. To sit here and continue to fabricate that STRs are the problem, I think we're wasting a lot of energy. But to go back, since I only have probably like 25 seconds, change this, and you probably have support of our 64 owners.
Thanks, Rich.
Aaron Cobb, 914 Center Street. And I came here tonight for one reason, because someone asked me a question, and I wanted to put it to the council. You know, and you have heard me say that there's no employment here. I hear people say that. And you talk about affordable houses. That's good, we need affordable houses. But I owned a store there for almost 29 years. Kids grew up there. When they graduated, they left. Why did they leave? Not because affordable houses, it was affordable houses there then. They left because there was no employment here. They left because they had to go somewhere else and get a job. And I was asked this week about the short-term rental. They, at least in the summertime, the short-term rental provide employment for the youth. Have the council ever thought about that? If you do away, not do away, if you cut down on the short-term rental, you're cutting down on at least summer jobs for the youth. So, have anybody ever thought about that? I haven't heard anybody on the council lately talk about bringing jobs here. Everything has been about STR. Nothing but, it's good to talk about that, but you don't put no energy in bringing jobs here. But at least short-term rental provide summer employment for the youth in quite a bit. And I know quite a bit of kids work for short-term rental because they come to the store and cash the check. So, I'm not exaggerating about, you know. And that's what I want you to think about. Think about the youth. Because you talk about the, the, you know, the short-term rental, they have too many people, and they're in the north and all that. That's what you had the police for. If too much noise, that's what you had the police for, this top of the north. I've been in the rental business for 30-some, over 30 years. And here in South Haven, some of you might not know and don't care, but I didn't own over 13, 14 houses here, and I rented them out, and I sold most of them now. And I never had a problem. When I had a problem, I called the police. If I had on my lease five peoples in the house, if I find out seven people was there, then I'd do something about it. And that's what the people on the short-term rental would do about. So, the council, think about the youth employment. Think about more than just trying to shut down the short-term rental. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Sukop, 45, Chippewa. I'd like to speak first for number 12 item on the agenda. The Planning Commission did not ask for reasons that their, um, the proposal that they set up was not discussed or voted on. I'm not sure if it was even voted on, but please give them reasons. I worked, I did Planning Commission. It's a lot of hard work. And it takes a really long time to get through these proposals. And they did what the council asked them to do, and then they weren't recognized. And I don't believe they asked you for reasons, but I think you owe them that. Onto something different. A couple of details within what you're looking at tonight. You're saying no more personal permits. I'm a very proud Realtor of South Haven, been Realtor for over 20 years now. There's been multiple occasions where we had an elderly person in a home, had to go to rehab, had to go to a daughter's house, and they rented their house just for that one summer, or just for a few times, to help keep that house going. And that's one of the reasons we had the personal permits in there. So, please look, consider that, and that's our locals. That's not, and I, and I know other people besides locals have it. I know we can't put the P R E attached to it, but still, that's, that's working for our locals. When you're talking about parking, you said that it was a different parking situation in the CBD. What about Monroe Park? What about the North Beach? There's cottages over there with no parking spaces at all that are short-term rentals. Are they going to have to try to conform? Are they going to lose their permits because they can't do the parking? You talked about the CBD being within your overlay. What about the general business district? If I got the bike shop across the street that's in general business district, but I'm not in a CBD, can I still have a short-term rental over my shop like the CBD can across the street? If somebody does a traffic infraction, if they are parking on the sidewalk, give the ticket to whoever is doing it. Don't try to lay that on the property owner. That's ridiculous. If I'm driving 25 miles over the speed limit and I'm renting a house, are you going to give that owner a tick, or give them a citation because I'm speeding? It's the same thing. It's a parking ticket. Go ticket whoever's doing something wrong. Lawsuits. I don't want my taxes going to lawsuits. I just don't. I'm selfish. I'm sorry, I don't want to pay your, your, your fees. I don't know how much Mary got for hers. Would it have paid for a connection fee for somebody who couldn't afford it, for an affordable house? I have no idea. So, the point is, I don't want to pay for legal fees. I don't want to pay for attorney fees. I don't want to pay for any of that. So, please, focus really hard on what you're doing here and listen to him, because he's saying a lot of good stuff. The last thing, and to me, the most important. You can say that I'm for short-term rentals because of my job. I'm for property rights, I'll tell you that, but I'm also for the locals. We did a survey, I did it with Teresa Cunningham back last summer. We were working, trying to do some stuff, and I had somebody who was a server in a restaurant. And her kids go to our schools, that's high school. She volunteered at the mitten. She may go to your church, I'm not sure, but she talked about it. She's a local. And what she said to me was, "I can't believe council doesn't think my job is important."
You have one minute.
And she was in tears. And it just made me sad that because she's a server, and she makes most of her money in the summer because she can be at home with her kids more in the winter, that her job's not important. It's consequences. Is this, is this going to reduce jobs? Heck, I don't know, but neither do you. Because a study hasn't been done. You don't know. You just don't know. Figure that out before you start doing this. Because it's locals that's getting hurt by it, or could be. I don't know. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mary Lynn Boggy, 70 Gabriel Drive. Excuse me. First of all, thank you for looking at this in a different way. I found this rather refreshing to see an ordinance come in that was very different from what had been proposed before. I think it would, some of the things in it, I felt, would make it easier for administration, clearer for what people need to do, and that's helpful. It also leads to hopefully more compliance and easier enforcement. I left a message on your phone, Mary, because in one of, what was posted online, there was, I think something was left out of it, and I wish I could remember the number, is 14.5. Does that sound like a general ordinance number? There was an A and a B, and they were repeating each other, so I know that either A was left out or B was left out. Anyway, if you want to check that out. One other thing, no one's losing their right to rent if they have a legal rental. So, all the rentals that are here are here until someone abandons it. So, all the jobs that are here now will still be here now, will still be how our tourists that come in on a daytime. So, there's, shouldn't really be any great economic impact. For someone who bought a house for thinking, "Well, I can sell it later and say that it can be a rental," when now probably it can't be because we're restricting them to certain areas. Oh, well, you buy stock, it goes up, it goes down. Same thing when you buy a house, it may go up, may go down. If you can't rent it for, you don't rent it, someone in the future can't rent it, oh, well, that's it. You put your money in, sometimes you make money, sometimes you lose it. And that's, that's just a consequence of an investment, no matter what you invest in. One, one other thing, I think a word in section 1904.37, where you've eliminated a lot, but you put in one thing, you put in four items that short-term rentals must be designed so as not to constitute a nuisance. And then you go on to say, number two, "Short-term rentals shall be designed, constructed, and operated in a manner that will be, lead to compatible, efficient, and attractive use of the property." I would like to say in, in number one, "Short-term rentals must be designed and operated so as not to cause a nuisance." Just to put in the word "operated," which makes sense that that should be how it's operated, so it's a compliment to what's there, not a detriment to what's already existing. Thank you very much for your work, especially George and Mary.
Anyone else?
Tim Stegman, 223 here on, "Good evening, Mayor, Council."
Good evening.
I think in order to understand what the Planning Commission is trying to communicate, it would be best tonight if you would swap item 11 and 12 around. That would be my recommendation, because then you would be back in December with item 11 already in hand instead of an abstract thought, and item 12 would be considered before that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. Just a couple of quick comments. I want to, um, say to the council that I appreciate the time and effort you all have put to bring toward, to bring forth this proposal, ordinance. We said years ago that it would probably be one that wouldn't satisfy everybody, but we look for ordinance that wouldn't hurt anybody in particular. I don't think this ordinance will damage anyone in a way of finances, what they're invested in. We're not taking anything away like that. And I do somewhat take, I am kind of a little drawn back when you hear comments about individuals just moving into this area claiming to be the victim. I've been here 58 years, worked at Palisades for 28 years, vested in this community, did all I could to contribute to the well-being of this community. And to hear people come in and say, "Oh, cry the victim," that kind of rubs me the wrong way. I've seen gentrification at its greatest take place on the south side of Ward 1. I've seen people go homeless. I've seen halves grow in half knots, you know, gets, you know, just stepped over. So, for someone to come up here and cry about money they would lose and threaten a lawsuit, that's, to me, is offensive. And so, I want to encourage this council to keep your head down, do what's right, because the real victim to me are the long-term residents that worked in this area for years that thought they were going to retire in a neighborhood, that they would know their neighbors, not a transit neighborhood where you don't know people coming in and going out. And so, we have suffered great losses too. Moved in a community, and now that community no longer looks the same. And I don't know what's going on, but someone is letting, telling these investors that perhaps they can get these STRs because they're still putting up mammoth homes right next to me. My house is only 1,300 square feet. We have two houses that just went up behind me that stands two stories high. Five, six, seven home rooms. Someone's telling those individuals that they can get an STR permit soon. South Side of Ward 1 has been oversaturated, no longer looks the same. And for people to come up here and cry about what's going on with them and their investment, to me, that's not fair at all. And I believe that what you're doing, you don't have to be, if they want to sue, sue. That's what our insurers, the writers, our insurance policies are for, the city's insurance policy. They, they're trying to make it seem like all this burden is going to be laid on the taxpayers. That's why we pay for insurance. Let them sue. The fact is, they've lost a lot of them in other cities. New Buffalo, they only won one. So, don't be threatened by these lawsuits. Do what's right. Try to protect the long-term residents and what's left of our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods have been shredded by greed, by greed. And we always, we never, we don't look at the schools, our numbers going down, the overall population in South Haven.
You have one minute.
When I was in, the overall population is under 4,000 now, and it's going to keep on dropping. Now, no one said STR is a reason for all these changes, but we do know that we are a great outlier, and we ought to have an ordinance put in place to try to bring some balance. And I believe that that's what this council was trying to do, is bring some balance in this city, because these STRs are way out of balance. So, do what's right. I appreciate the effort that you all have put out. And my wife will not carry the burden of, of a lawsuit because of few individuals. because of few individuals looking to profit on a business that shouldn't have been allowed in the first place in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we are moving on. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D?
I move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Support.
Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, new business, number nine, the city council will be asked to consider approval of the following special event applications. A, special event 2025-07, Harbor Fest 2025, to be held June 13th and 14th, 2025, at Riverfront Park. And B, special event 2025-08, Rotary Pancake Breakfast 2025, to be held on July 6th from 6:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Huron Street Pavilion.
I'd move to approve special event 2025-07, Harbor Fest 2025, as read by the mayor, and special event 2025-08, Rotary Pancake Breakfast 2025, as read by the mayor.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion's passed, the special events are approved. Number 10, the city council will be asked to adopt resolution 2025-10, a resolution recommending that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, MLCC, grant Veritas Estate Winery LLC, DBA, grant Veritas Estate Winery LLC, an off-premises tasting room license for use at 550 Phoenix Street. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a winery, an off-premise tasting room license, so similar to, say, Gravity or the other wineries. They have an existing winery permit onsite, so they would be, they would be requesting MLCC permission to have a wine tasting site here at, at 550 Phoenix. The idea is, is that there would be a small market, so it'll be an internal market, and they will be allowed to taste wine at certain locations within that market, but that would be not exceeding the exterior of 550 Phoenix.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-10, a resolution recommending that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission grant Veritas Estate Winery LLC a, an off-premises tasting room license, as read by the mayor.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next, the city council will be asked to take the following actions regarding the draft ordinances prepared by the Short-Term Rental Work Group. A, introduce an ordinance to amend sub-paragraph 116 G1C to enact section 10-246 and to enact Article 5 of Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances and set the matter for a public hearing at the next city council meeting to be held on March 3rd, 2025, at 7 p.m. B, send the draft zoning ordinance amendment to the Planning Commission for an expedited review. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as we know, we've been working on, we've been given four weeks to work on short-term rental ordinances. And what we have here tonight are an 80% solution. I don't think anyone who worked in the work group thought that this was going to be everything that we ever needed to deal with. So, what we have here is a proposed zoning ordinance that would, if council agreed, we could send that to the Planning Commission for an expedited review on that ordinance, as well as a licensing portion. And I think it's important to note that while we acknowledge that there were existing STRs prior to this new ordinance being adopted, those old uses would be becoming non-conforming, and we have an approval process for that. I do want to clarify that I've heard in some of the comments that this new ordinance would not create more vested rights. And I, I think it's important to distinguish that the licensure does not convey vested rights, but there is zoning considerations that have been kind of factored in. The new zoning ordinance would create an overlay zone where it would allow for the expanded use or new STRs. And those areas is, and I'm happy to pull that up on, on the overhead here, but there's three locations, Trailside, Phases 1 and 2, Harbor Club, and portions of the Central Business District into the B3 and into the R1C neighborhood. So, those are the areas of the overlay zone which would allow for new short-term rentals. But all other short-term rentals would not be allowed in any other district unless they are legally non-conforming, have been received to variance, or meet the current, or the proposed current ordinance. Dave, is there anything I'm, I'm leaving out there?
No, I think that covers it.
Okay. Thanks. So, we have these two schemes here, and that's something we've been partnered with for some time because we do have existing zoning, and then we had some additional licensing requirements. And that's something this council had talked about quite frequently, is how to move many things out of the zoning and into the licensing, so we can tailor that to meet the needs of this community. So, I'm happy to kind of walk through what the individual portions say. I know we did have our five o'clock workshop, so we kind of talked about things at a 50,000-foot level. I wasn't sure if there's any questions that council want to lead off with, that we wanted to get into. So, I guess I'm saying, where do you, where, where do you want us to go from here?
Joe.
I think you said it well. It's 80% of the way there, and you're never going to get 100%. I think several of the council members said earlier this, this evening that we've tried to hit all the biggest areas. The most important thing that people should remember is twofold. One, there will be no more short-term rentals in Ward 1, Ward 2, and parts of Ward 3. Where we will allow more is in the overlay, which is fair because they're accepting of them. The second thing is, those who have the vested rights, short-term rental owners, they will not be taken away from them. Nothing is being taken away from them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Question.
Go ahead.
For Dave or for Kate? During the workshop, there were some questions about lawful and unlawful compliance. And I think at the root of the discussion was a fear that current STRs that are not compliant, like it's, they have insufficient parking, that if we pass this, that'll somehow make those legal. And that's not what this does. Is that correct?
No, the, the question is, we're talking about an STR that was established outside of the new overlay district, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. The question will be, you know, was it lawful, non-conforming at the time? And part of that as well, did, were you in compliance with the, all the requirements to be lawful, non-conforming? And I would assume that back in the day, at the time, one of them would be a parking requirement. Now, we're talking zoning requirements, so we're looking at zoning requirements. Yeah.
It's, we're not inadvertently grandfathering short-term rentals.
Correct.
Improperly functioning.
Correct.
For clarity, you continue to say lawful, non-conforming. So, they're lawfully existing at the time the ordinance is adopted. They become non-conforming because of the adoption of the new ordinance. So, they have to be lawful, they have to be fully compliant with the zoning ordinance now before it's changed to be lawful.
They would, they would have to, they would have to be in compliance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance as it existed at the time in which the use was established.
Well, exactly. That's what I meant, that it would be under the current ordinances that are getting repealed. And that would be the measurement. So, if there was onsite parking requirements, those, the zoning compliance determination would have to look at the onsite parking requirements and determine if it was required. And if it was required, did they meet the onsite parking requirements?
I think that, that sounds right.
At the time, that the, and that they didn't abandon it.
Yeah, and that it wasn't abandoned, correct.
So, then the other one, Amanda spoke, suggesting we're getting rid of the personal STR. We're just calling it class 2. We're not getting rid of personal STR.
Right. I mean, I think as a practical matter, moving forward, are we talking existing or moving forward?
The new.
Yeah, so, you would, you would have somebody who, if you have a personal STR that's, that is deemed lawful, non-conforming outside of the overlay district, correct, they would be class 2. If you had a personal STR in the, over, in the overlay district, they could either stay where they're at as, oh, I am a personal STR, my zoning compliance says I'm a personal STR. Or, they could go through the process of special land use just like anybody else in the overlay district. So, as a, I would be somewhat shocked if you had a lot of personal, or class 2 licenses in the overlay district because, but it could happen. You could have somebody who might, might not meet the requirements for the new special land use, so they're kind of stuck where they're at.
I believe the concern is that there will now no longer be an opportunity to get a personal short-term, what is currently a personal short-term rental for up to 28 days in our residential district. You can only get it in the overlay district. And I believe that was the concern raised by Amanda, is that those who want a personal short-term rental for a very limited time will now no longer be able to get it in a residential area. And the concern was that it's very hard to enforce. And I'm very cognizant of the concerns raised. And I do believe that I, I think the majority of city council really do want to allow that for our residents who are completely PRE here, you know, many, many months, more than six months, really. But the, the, the discussion at that point in time was, we would rely on the state determination of PRE because that took it out of the, it lessened the administrative aspect on the city staff and allowed that decision to be more, less burdensome on the staff. And the whole intent of the personal STR, I think it's based on the intent of how the personal STR came about in the original ordinance, was to allow our residents who would greatly benefit from the income from that short-term rental to help pay or offset the tax burden. So, that is allowing our residents to stay here by having that limited income from the short-term rental. And I think that's what Amanda was referencing. And those are not allowed under the current one. And I would like to see that being brought forward sooner to discuss. And again, I think it's the enforcement issue that has raised the concern. I had provided some suggestions based on how New Buffalo does some of their monitoring. And I certainly hope we can find a, quickly find a path forward to allow that for those few people that would benefit from it.
Any questions at this end? Comments? George.
Just, being part of the work group, I know I didn't get everything I wanted. Mary didn't get everything she wanted. We did work really hard to come up with something that I think works. And I'd like to see us move forward with this, just because I, I feel it's a good product. I appreciate all the input Dave gave. Dave had a lot of good insights into things that we had in previous drafts and things that we had in our existing ordinance that were not necessarily the best. And so, a lot of that has gone away, and I think that improves what we have here, so.
Thank you. Okay.
So, my comments were, to help add breadth to Jeff's comments, with regard to the work group, we did a lot in a very condensed timeline. And it wasn't a, a simple copy and paste from the current code of ordinances in the short-term rental ordinance that was created back in 2016, I believe, but really a completely new ordinance. And some things have changed, as I had discussed, with regard to fireplaces. And also, we had discussed items that would extinguish, you know, a, a right of a short-term rental. And one of our goals was to decrease the number of short-term rentals in our residential areas and preserve the character in our residential areas. And I have identified a few areas that, with slight modification, I think, could get us to the 80%. I personally believe that we're slightly under 80%, especially with the character of the neighborhood aspect in light of some of these omissions, such as not holding, not allowing a citation, civil citation for violation of ordinances. And I appreciate that people are saying, well, you shouldn't hold short-term rental owners responsible. What has not been said is that the city has discretion on when they will and will not revoke a license. And what I have seen is if the short-term rental owner or operator is really trying to do the right thing, I have, I believe citations have not, I believe only warnings have issued, citations have not. But not including that really inhibits our ability to revoke a license where there are violations that occur more frequently than not.
Mary, your comments aren't germane to our motion, so we're going to move on?
Yes, they are.
Let's move on.
No, personal point of order.
What's your point?
These are germane to the, to the issue, and just because you do not like them does not mean I cannot discuss them.
That's, point not taken. Let's move on.
Appeal. Can I get a second for my appeal?
One second.
So, then that means the city council votes as a whole as to whether I can continue or not.
Okay. All in favor of letting Mary continue, say yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. I say no.
So, I believe that's four to three, so I will continue. And so, I do believe some minor changes, and in fact, some things affect the zoning ordinance that should really be addressed with the non-compliance and inserting that if an owner voluntarily demolishes the home, the vested right for short-term rental would be removed because we do not want rebuilding of homes. You know, demolishing our modest homes and rebuilding larger homes. And addressing the fire, fireworks issue. And as long as the zoning ordinance is in front of us, I do believe that we should correct something that occurred in the recodification with regard to rebuilding for non, for the natural destruction of a non-compliant structure. And I'm prepared to make those motions as we go through.
Okay. Is there a motion to, for item A?
A motion to what?
Okay, Joe, you made the motion, or you need to hear it?
No, I'm asking you to.
To read it? Okay. Item A, introduce an ordinance to amend sub-paragraph 116 G1C to enact section 10-246 and to enact Article V, Article 5 of Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances and set the matter for a public hearing at the next city council meeting to be held on March 3rd, 2025, at 7 p.m. Kate, do you want to add to that or clarify it?
No, I think it, we're just talking about, again, the code of ordinances, which is the licensure portion of that.
Okay.
And these are two ordinances.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Okay.
During the workshop, we did talk about a lot, and Mary had a few points that I think were valid. During the workshop, we did talk about a lot. And Mary had a few points that I think were valid and worthy of more discussion and a vote. And also getting our attorney's opinion on, just for example, on page two of our printout, the section 10 dash 246A, Mary suggested that we add not currently law fully registered. So I'm wondering if you feel like that is an improvement on the language and its clarity?
And if I could clarify, so the reason I noticed that is under another section, 14502 on page 67, it talks about a lawful registration. And so I didn't know for consistency, when speaking of registered registrations, should we say valid or lawful? I think previously lawfully registered was the normal term used. But I note that in the previous, other section, it says valid.
Could we have the first section number, please, where, where a change is being suggested so we can get there?
So 1046A.
Okay. Yeah, I did say that.
And then. Anything in the other spot, Mary?
So the other, so the basis of that request is based on 14502 on page 67. Letter C. Where it talks about valid registration.
We could, we could explore language like valid or whatnot. And again, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll give two cents, two cents unsolicited and council can do with it as it will. I anticipate there will be much more discussion and amendments proposed and things like that. And council can definitely work through that tonight. I think what the mayor was getting at is we want to, at least in terms of accomplishing our business today, say, the ordinance is introduced and it's going to be set for a public hearing. And then at the meeting where there's a public hearing, you know, there, there can be more discussion and more amendments made. So I, I think trying to get, I think, I think it's my, it looks like some members of council may be talking past each other. So if, if we could maybe introduce it, set it for a hearing and send it to planning commission.
This is zone, this is licensing.
Right.
Doesn't go to planning.
No, the other one, go to planning commission. And then use the time to go ahead and talk through issues and make recommendations. And I could write things down. And I'm sure I walk out of here with some homework and that's, that's great. Then we can come back at the public hearing and say, okay, here's, here's the things that were discussed. I had time to look at them, reviewed them with staff. Here's our recommendations. Here's an issue we want to go into a closed session on and things like that. So it, I would recommend that no, you know, formal amendments we made at this time, just kind of council highlighting, yes, this is an issue that's raised by a council member. The rest of us agree that it's worth the attorney and staff mulling over. Or the rest of us that don't think it's worth attorney and staff mulling over. Then we can come back at the next meeting and give council the, you know, staff's thoughts on what was proposed by members of council so that you're in the best position following hearing and more public comment to kind of make those decisions and then decide which, which of those items you really want to propose as an amendment versus, oh, okay, that makes sense. I don't need to, an amendment for that.
Okay. So for point of clarification, what is introduced today could be presented at the public hearing with slight modifications?
Yeah, I think if council says, we're going to introduce this ordinance and we're going to set this for a public hearing, we would have a public hearing on what's currently written. But I would anticipate at that hearing, we're also going to come with, hey, council, we know the hearing's on that ordinance. Here's the red line showing some proposed changes by staff. Here's questions that have been answered. Okay, now what changes do we want to make in terms of moving it forward? And provided we're not straying completely from what's written, we're, I think we're well within the confines of the charter requirements. Kind of like when planning commission, you have a hearing on an ordinance of the planning commission that comes up. That doesn't mean council can't tinker with it afterwards. There's a line somewhere. But I think most of the comments and suggestions will likely be within the parameters of, yeah, it's substantively more or less the same.
So.
Thank you.
One area where I think it would be beneficial to ensure no strain too far would be the fireworks. Because I think that is significant, what is proposed is sufficiently different from what we currently have. So if we could provide guidance on, or do you need a vote on, you know?
It's up to council.
Dave said he took notes on that.
But it's a council's preference. So would it be beneficial to you for efficiency to know where council is on that at this point in time?
If council knows where it's at on that, they could give some direction. Or council, knowing the options, could wait till the next meeting and provide direction at that point, whatever, whatever council prefers.
Let's save our comments to the next, to the public hearing.
I'd prefer to hear from the public before we.
Yep. Okay. Is there a motion for item A? Joe?
I'll make a motion for item A to introduce an ordinance to amend subparagraph 1-16 G1C to enact section 10-246 and to enact article five of chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances and set the matter for a public hearing at the next city council meeting to be held March the 3rd.
I'll second.
At 7:00.
I'll second. Any more discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now do we go to part B? The next part is send the draft zoning ordinance amendment to the planning commission for an expedited review. Is there a motion?
I'll move to send the draft zoning, zoning ordinance amendment to the planning commission for an expedited review.
Second.
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Discussion.
Discussion.
So for this, Dave, so I had inquired about if both code of ordinances are going forward, do we need to delete? I mean, can we delete some of the terms that you've gotten, that you've proposed deletion? And we, so what's getting sent to planning commission? That could be addressed at that time when we know more about what's in the ordinance and what terms should or should not be deleted to avoid some terms getting deleted because they're in the, does that make sense?
Yeah, there's some of the old, as council member Housley has noted, some of the old short term rental terms, definitions, if you will, and the current zoning ordinance are proposed for deletion. My reason for proposing those for deletion is that they would not be used anywhere else. So I, unless there's something I'm missing, I don't think there's a reason to define a term that you're not going to use anywhere else. But that would definitely be a topic that planning commission could discuss. And in planning commissions, you know, they'll have the public hearing, they'll deliberate on it diligently like they do always. And they'll make the recommendation. And those recommendations may include, hey, Dave missed this. This is why we think they should be included. Or we looked at it, we talked about it, and we argued about it, and we, we are okay deleting them.
Exactly.
But I think it makes sense to hear from planning on that for sure.
Thank you for the clarification.
The commissioner's right behind you.
I do have some questions, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead, approach.
Well, being, I'm your counterpart and I have to carry out what the motion is. I need to know what expedited means. Are we going to have a special meeting before your next council meeting? And if, we can't have a public hearing because there's not enough time.
So I guess I would, I would say that when we say expedited review, that you would use your normal times to review the ordinance and then without delay, set the matter for a public hearing. We do know that there are certain notice requirements that have to be met. But I don't think this, this council's been asked, is going to be asking for a special meeting, just knowing that this will be just folded into your normal course of business. We understand the planning commission is, is do, is still doing the master plan update.
Yes.
Like expeditious.
Expeditious, yes.
Thank you.
Just normal speed.
Yes, normal speed.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Could we have a roll call, please?
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hozli?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And so 12 is no longer an option.
I would, I would, I would think that you should acknowledge receipt, that you received the, the 11-7 to 2024 zoning ordinance recommendation. As you've now already forwarded a different zoning ordinance, it may be moot. But as we noted in the staff report, the planning commission would like to know that you had had, you've received that, that you had looked at it. And if there's any reasons why you didn't like it, I think it kind of speaks for itself that you decided to go another way. But it might be to facilitate the relationship. Remember, it's a small community and sometimes, you know, feelings are hurt when it was inadvertent. All you have to say is you received it and that you may have gone in a different direction. Here's where you wanted to go.
Okay. We want to thank our planning commission who put in a lot of time for this. And we have seen, seen it, reviewed it, and we are going in another direction. Does anyone else have comments about this? Go ahead.
I would like, also like to thank the planning commission for their hard work on this item that was on November 7th. On that date, we were, some of us were caught off guard by an alternative item. The staff was caught off guard. And so we should have acknowledged this at the time. We should have voted on it at the time. We voted seven to nothing to send this to planning commission. You gave us exactly what we wanted and, and we dropped the ball. They did great work. So I just wanted to thank them for their hard work.
I just want to echo that the work done on it was great. And I did watch the planning commission meeting and just wanted to let the planning commissioners know that it was read, received, processed, and that, yes, we just decided to go in a different direction after kind of stepping back and looking at the big picture. But thank you for all the work that you put into it.
Any other comments? George?
We're not going to do that again.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. We are now moving on to public comment. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Allison Furman. I am the legislative director for Joey Andrews' office. And I was just stopping in to give a brief legislative update. This term, Representative Andrews now serves on three committees. We are on transportation, energy, and communications and technology. And looking ahead, we are looking to continue working on several key pieces of legislation. The first being the bipartisan nuclear energy package that we were a part of last term. We're bringing that back. We'll be working on that with Representative Pauline Wenzel. And then we are continuing to work on our bipartisan methane digester legislation as well, as well as our short term rental legislation and other legislation from last term. On the one fair wage, Representative Andrews had a message that he wanted to share on this. Last week, the Senate passed its bill on the tipped wage. And it's increasing it to 50% of the full minimum wage by 2031. And while we've heard that negotiations on other pieces of the issue are still ongoing, we could see this being something that we support. We will need to see the full picture, you know, before we do support it. But we are opposed to the House versions of bill, of the bills that have been proposed. These bills would gut the sick leave protections and delay minimum wage increases. These bills were also not negotiated and the negotiations that we had at the end of last year actually went much further than what has been proposed currently. So we were disappointed to see last term that those bills did not make it. There was not a good effort made by our leadership to see those pass. So now we're kind of left playing politics and small businesses are asking for help. So we are hoping that this next week, the Senate is able to move stuff on sick leave. We have not seen any of the bills that have been proposed there quite yet. But if it is a compromise between what's out there, we would definitely support it. So any questions?
Just thank you very much for sitting through this and providing this update. We appreciate everything that Representative Andrews is doing for our area. And I understand that, you know, are things progressing with the, the wage matter? Can you speak to that?
Yes. Yeah. So that was what I was just kind of speaking to. There are two bills, two bills in the Senate and two bills in the House. The House version is very different from the Senate version. And so we're kind of in a place right now where the House and the Senate need to negotiate on what's going to be in the final version of those bills. So we're hoping this week we should, we should see the Senate bill on the sick leave. And then we can kind of decide from there, you know, what negotiations can be made. But until that legislation is proposed, we don't really know what it will look like moving forward. We're just hearing that this next week it should be coming up. And so we should have eyes on it very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments this evening?
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I want to first thank also the chairman of the planning commission for their hard work. I'm here to speak on a recent planning commission workshop that was held January 7th, second to discuss the master plan and future land use map, which would allow for spot zoning or reclassification of future land use throughout our city. Well, as a result of their workshop, members of the planning commission, along with I, along, excuse me, along with, I believe, the zoning administrator agreed to change that, what would allow four blocks on the south side of Ward 1 from Elworth to Elkenbury Street to be designated as mixed use versus R1A zoning. I understand our city zoning administrator is selling it as not a rezoning change, but it would allow for the owner of the property to request rezoning in the future. Either way, would allow for transit, for rent, apartment complexes to be built on residential streets next to residential single family homes. As a result, I mean, also it creates a possibility for these types of buildings to be leased or used as STR properties in the future. And as you know, the south side of Ward 1 has already been oversaturated with STRs more than any other ward per block. And it has already been stripped of its characteristics with the buildings of these big homes that don't fit in our neighborhood. So again, I express my concerns along with many others who don't feel comfortable with coming up to speak before this board nor the planning board. But keep in mind, the reason why some of the residents on the south side of Ward 1 feel the way that they do, especially of people of color, is because the city has a history of making, has a history of not making all residents feel comfortable, especially when it comes down to making decision that affects them or their neighborhood. Some are here on tonight. I'm going to ask them to stand and they can be seated real quickly, those that came with me. Council, I wanted to be clear and understood that just like the residents of Ward 3 came out in numbers to protest against a proposed future land use change centered around Oak Court, which resulted in, I believe, a stoppage. The residents of the south side of Ward 1 feel just as equally united in their efforts to stop the spot change of mixed use in their neighborhood. Also, you and I both know that this mixed use spot changing has not and will not be forced down the throat of any residents or homeowner along Monroe Boulevard. And it should not be expected to be tolerated by the residents of south, on the south side of Ward 1. In fact, there has been several questions asked pertaining to this proposal. For starters, what brought about this desire to spot change four blocks on the south side of Ward 1 in the first place? Was there a request from a resident to have them rezoned in order to build an apartment complex or convert an existing building into an apartment complex? And if so, who was it? And if there was any, if there was a discussion, was all the members of planning a part of the discussion? Was there conflict of interest of any board member during this discussion? All these questions have been asked, but to the best of my knowledge, no answers have been given. Where this seems to be no transparency at all. And what we do know is that the new zoning ordinance was amended during recodification, at which time the conflict of interest definition was removed, eliminating a clear definition of conflict of interest, which in my opinion allows room for decisions to be made by a person on the planning board who stands to benefit from that decision. If our city manager or zoning administrator is willing to offer information, it would be appreciated. But my stand is still the same, no to mixed use zoning for four blocks on the south side of Ward 1. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we are moving on to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind the council that this Saturday is our seasonal job fair in this room. So from noon to 12, noon to 2:00 PM, we'll be in this room looking for potential workers. Again, we hire between 40 and 50. Again, we hire between 40 and 50 individuals for various seasonal jobs. That could be parking, that could be beach enforcement, marinas, bridge tenders and whatnot. So tomorrow, I'm sorry, Saturday, will be the seasonal job fair. Also on Saturday will be the We Care Island Set. That's Saturday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I know a couple of you are signed up, and I'll be joining you, again, to raise money for people in need, for keeping their lights on, keeping their bills paid, or just people in need in our community. We know there are many. And then last thing, I do want to thank George, Sleeper, and Mary Hozley, Dave, and Kelly for just their work on the STR work group. It was a hall these four weeks. We did a lot of work. I am appreciative that the council acknowledged that there's a lot of work to be done, and a lot, a lot of work that has been done, and of course, a lot of work to be done. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for your time, your input, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Letitia?
No comment.
George?
No comment.
Joe?
I have a lot I want to say, and I'm not going to say it tonight, but I'm very disappointed with Tim Stegman's comments at the Planning Commission that I found insulting and were misinformation. He made the comment that he didn't even think city council read the short-term rental ordinance. Nothing could be further from the truth. Three different times I've lifted this up and said, I've read it in detail, and even my motion, I took in consideration the Planning Commission. I think a good leader should have the skills and ability to bring people together. The inflammatory divisive statements that he made about Mary in particular, and me by name, and then having his own council, his own members disagree with him, some of them, and characterize us as having a problem as city council, did nothing but make the city and make the people in this council more divisive. And I'm really disappointed with that. I think he made a polarizing situation. It didn't have to be. Tonight, in my humble opinion, the seven of us worked together. Four of you worked together as a group and put together something that has taken years and is hard, and it affects people's pocketbooks, it affects people's businesses, and it affects people where they live, and we came together. And I think anyone that stood up and made comments at the Planning Commission, especially the chair, and was so divisive in his comments and inaccurate, I think did an injustice to the city and to the Planning Commission. And I'm sorry to have to say it, but I'm not going to sit back and have someone insult me and make statements that just were not true. Thanks.
Mary?
Yes. I would like to thank city council members for discussing, acknowledging the Planning Commission report and talking about our efforts here. I do apologize for the ordinance not being acknowledged at our November 18th meeting, and I'm going to strive to do better, being relatively new. But I do appreciate you guys taking time to acknowledge it and acknowledge their work over this past year. I do believe that some of Chair Stegman's comments were not accurate with regard to ours, not to minimize what we did, we did. We had four different meetings, people worked very diligently, but with someone who's been so involved, I think there can be some mixing of times of how, how involved they've been and what work was involved recently. To Bishop Wilkins' comment, I hear you loud and clear with regard to the future land use map, and with regard to the mixed-use, I have raised a concern that in trying to minimize the number of districts, some districts have been removed for future land use, and only the mixed-use has, has been maintained. And I believe that can result in a complete change, unintended change, of what can happen. And I understand some people, you know, continually say, well, we're, we are not rezoning that property, it's just a potential rezoning. Well, my concern, and I believe that's the concern that Bishop Wilkins was raising, is correct, the future land use map does not rezone it, but it certainly opens the door, and once the horse is out of the barn, the horse is out of the barn. So as people have said tonight, anticipate unintended consequences and listen to the constituents most directly affected, and that should be taken into account, and that should be weighted by the decision-makers over the subject matter that they're deciding. And I have raised a concern about that, especially with the future land use map, because this was only an update. And although this is affecting, some may say, only four blocks, but for the people in those four blocks, that's significant, and that's what needs to be taken into consideration. And so I hope, and I will strive at the Planning Commission to make sure that that is heard. On a positive note, we have a great community. They really do a lot for everybody. The Scott Club has a lot of free presentations. Tomorrow, they have framing Rosa Lee Ingram, A Cold War Era Murder Trial and Civil Rights Odyssey at 1:00. On February 23rd, the Manhattan Dolls concert at the First Congregational Church, only $20. And we have a lot of people who do a lot for the community, the Rotary with their pancake breakfast and the funds they make. Tonight was a collective mess free meal for the community. I think they had a record number of 120 meals ordered, so that's fantastic. We really tried to get the word out. And this coming weekend is the Island Set, and I am very proud to support them in their, in their endeavor to help those who need help, especially with the frigid weather we've had. So come out to warming your hearts.
Okay. Well, Kate, I maybe should have asked this during your comments, but I was just wondering about an update on the Code of Excellence, or whatever we were calling it.
I don't have one right now. We've been kind of hauling in one direction.
Right.
Now that's kind of calmed down. I'd like to set out some dates and see if we can meet again. The idea is to wrap up the, the last bit that we have, because we've gotten, I would say, quite a bit of work done, and then we would be looking at having a workshop with the council as a whole, and also bringing legal down and just making sure this comports with what you're looking for. So that's, that's the intention. I'll get out some dates to the ad hoc committee and see if we can start that up again.
Awesome. And then my other comment was just about all of the voices that we heard come up, talking about the character of our neighborhoods. I know Pat Shepard kind of went over some of the things in our master plan that I feel like people up here and elsewhere lose sight of, and it's just, to me, I feel like these are things that we need to keep reminding ourselves, this is what we're working for. Our priority is the residents. I feel good about voting on the short-term rental ordinance to move it forward, because it is going to be an improvement for the residents, and that's my top priority here. That's it.
Thank you.
My comment, my neighbor Lois reached out to me. She said my phone number was listed wrong somewhere, was either on the City Waves or on the website, and so then I contacted Megan, and I think you found it. Yeah, she's nodding, so she did. And because Wendy sent me an email today, she, somebody had reached out, trying to get ahold of me, and got ahold of her. So everyone knows, it's 269-512-4045. 269-512-4045. And email, email's always the fastest way to get me. I always have that open during school, and then usually during my planning time, I can fire off quick responses, but that's also the phone number. Okay, Megan's got it.
It was on the City Waves, so any previous copies of the City Waves will have the incorrect phone number going forward, they will have the correct number.
There we go. Throw out your old ways. Those are my comments.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. I want to thank everybody who, for their teamwork tonight and voting to make our decisions unanimous. Thank you for speaking up, and thanks for the people who worked on the Short-Term Rental Work Committee. So I really appreciate your teamwork, and I was on a school board for 13 years, and I know when you come to consensus, not everybody's happy. So, but I'm really pleased that you were able to work together and make some tough decisions and move forward. So thanks to all of you, and that's all I have. If there's no further business, we're adjourned.